All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The date is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. This is a regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We continue to do with the, uh, deal with the health emergency. So the board is using the WebEx teleconferencing format. Um, and so whether you're joining us by way of web or the teleconferencing platform, we thank you for your participation virtually. Also, we're having some bandwidth issues today. So if you have your video, please turn that off and just use it when you're during your presentation. For those of you in court, in chambers, thank you very much for being here. And so when it comes up for unscheduled appearances, those in chambers, if you filled out a speaker card, we'll take it in the order that we received it. Those online, we will look for the raise your hand feature or wait until you get somebody's attention to do unscheduled appearances online or by teleconference. Each vote today will be verbal or a voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. And so after we have discussion and then a motion and then a second, each item will be taken up by roll call by district. In order to establish a quorum, I'm going to ask now the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs, Richard Valley is absent. Doug Verboen, Craig Peterson, Richard Fagundes.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the record, we have four members present, one absent. Thank you very much. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business. And now if I can ask you all to please rise as we invite Pastor Arthur Fox of New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church forward to deliver the invocation.
Thank you, sir.
For a number of reasons. Let us pray. Almighty God, we call upon you this day to bless us and keep us. We ask you to cause your face to shine upon us and be gracious to us, not only as a people meeting in this place, but as a nation. We ask you, oh God, to send healing, that you would end the strife and the dissent that are destroying the fabric of our people, that you'd show mercy to us. And we ask for your grace for the men who will be serving and women who will be serving this morning at this meeting. Give them wisdom to help our county serve you better. And grant, oh God, that they would be able to come to agreement on issues and that where there is disagreement, you would bring about peace. Grant your blessing then on this meeting, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Last week, Kings County lost Bill Gundecker. He was a 37-year member of the Kings County staff, retiring in 2001 as the Human Services Director. May he rest in peace. Thank you very much, everyone. Now, please join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Independence. Ready, begin.
Our pledge, the citizens of the United States of America, to the flag of our flag, to stand our base and to declare our individual and the community of this country.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pastor Fox. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board under unscheduled?
I didn't, do not have any written correspondence, but the first speaker card is Scott Holwell.
Morning, Scott. Thanks for being here.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Holwell, Veteran Services. I am here this morning in response to a question brought by Supervisor Peterson at last week's meeting during Supervisor comments regarding Operation Green Light. And I was left slack-jawed and back on my heels and then realized as soon as the meeting ended that I kind of thought I knew what it meant. And I'm sure many of you folks have seen green porch lights or garage lights that folks, where folks are burning a green bulb out there, and this is related to that. So here's what I found in my research about the actual Operation Green Light. Operation Green Light was born as a collaboration between the New York State Association of Counties, New York State Council of Education Associations, and the New York State County Veteran Service Officers Association. And there are 62 counties of New York State. Its mission is to show support for veterans and all, from all military conflicts with a special emphasis on the veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as raise awareness about challenges faced by veterans and the resources that are available at the county, state, and federal level to assist veterans and their families. As brought to our attention by Supervisor Peterson, on July 23rd at their annual conference, the National Association of Counties announced their partnership with the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, and on this coming Veterans Day invite the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs to join Operation Green Light and show support for veterans by lighting our buildings green from November 6th through November 12th. By shining a green light, city governments, businesses, and our residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. So how do we participate if we wish to do so? Operation Green Light is about shining a light on the service of our veterans. Studies show throughout America that most Americans support American veterans, but the veterans are not seeing that or are not feeling that. Individuals, like I said, can participate by putting up green bulbs outside their homes or inside their homes if they wish to spark conversation between them and guests. By shining a green light, we let veterans know that they're seen, appreciated, and supported. While this event is focused around the week of Veterans Day, November 6th through the 12th, veterans are encouraged to continue to shine their light year-round. So governments and businesses are encouraged, and not just the county government, but towns, et cetera, et cetera, are encouraged to shine green lights on their buildings, change their outside lights through that week of November 6th through the 12th. And of course, to announce participation in advance and gather some support from the community. There's a lot of information that's available on, there's a toolkit available on the NACO website, also one on the New York State Association of Counties website. And we stand ready to work with admin in order to be able to participate at some level in the county on that.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Lynch.
Morning, Bill. Thanks for being here.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. Just want to give you a little update on your fire department this morning. We continue to operate up at the Oak Fire in Mariposa County. We have 10 personnel, three units up there. We expect them to be up there probably through the end of the week, and then hopefully they may get to come home. Dozer nine is home right now from that incident, doing some required maintenance and needed maintenance. And then we expect that thing to go back out real soon. And his patient factor is high. Just to give you a little breakdown for the state of California, these are CAL FIRE incident stats only. I don't have any federal stats, but there's about 150,000 acres been burned since wildfire season started, 4,900 incidents. There's been two fatalities, and the state has lost 96 structures. I can't really report on the feds because they're not as easy to get data from. So, but we all know how the fires in the forest go. It's hard to put mechanical equipment and that type of stuff in the, in national forests, but they have in the last few years, so that's a hopeful sign. But fires continue to happen, and we'll continue to be out there and help suppress them. So, thank you.
Very good. Thanks. This is why we need two dozers. Give one break.
Yes, our next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Good morning, Rebecca. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. I just come to you as a citizen. That's really frustrating, honestly. I know that you're responsible for other cities, and then you delegate the responsibilities for, to the city to take care of them. But when we have a problem with how the city is being run with city officials, I went to the source. At least I'm not happy with the way things are going right now. So what do you do when you have problems with the city officials that are not listening to their people? And so is this where you guys step in, or do I need to, or do you put in an official request to you guys, and then you guys turn it into the state in regards to a political audit? So that they can be like put on probation or something pending, you know, investigation of, you know, and complaints? And, or do I put some sort of questionnaire or some sort of ballot or something together? Because I'm going to be going to the meeting tonight, and yeah, it's, it'll be heck on fires, okay? But, yeah, but I'm just-
County Council, you want to address that a little bit?
Yeah, let me address that. Cities are actually not overseen by the county.
Oh, okay.
They are independent jurisdictional bodies. And so the county who would, has, has no means to enforce or, or do anything with respect to cities. They're, if you want to discuss more after about things that you can and can't do, then I'm sure that we can have a conversation about that.
Okay.
But the county as a body has no jurisdictional oversight over the cities.
Although we would like to.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah.
Strike that last record.
It's like, can't unring the bell, but anyway. Yeah, it's just, I understand you, Mr. Fagundes, that you're busy with emails or however your days are with a lot of meetings. And I don't know if you got my email in regard to requesting like a political audit from the state. Because I know Lamore did it. So, because things were kind of haywire over there, and they just like 86'd everybody, and now four new representatives. So, maybe kind of go that direction, but I don't know. But anyway, I understand you're busy, but I guess, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And, sorry, if, I'm going to constantly say this because you know I like animals. If you find a pet, it's not finder's keepers. If they're well-kept, that means that's somebody's baby. They just, and if they don't have them chipped, that doesn't mean that if they cared for their animal, that they would have, that they would have chipped them. Did it ever occur to them that they are indoor animals that got out, or they dug under the fence and got out somehow? So somebody's missing them, and it's not finder's keepers. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay, nobody online. Last call for anybody in, in chambers. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a reporting out on the closed session held on July 26th. And County Council, do you have a report?
The county took no reportable action.
Very good. Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes from that meeting held on July 26th. Board members had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Move by the comment on move approval.
Second. Moved by Verboen, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs, Doug Verboen, Craig Peterson, Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the item stands approved, four in favor, one absent. The next item is the consent calendar, and all items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. And there are two items under the Human Services Agency.
If there are no question or comments, I'll move approval. Let's present it.
Second. Moved by Verboen, seconded by Peterson. Discussion. Seeing or hearing no discussion on the consent calendar, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved, four in favor, one absent. Thank you very much, everyone. The next item is regular agenda items coming from behavioral health. And the item is for the semi statewide enterprise health record program.
Eunchang. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Eunchang Perry, Deputy Director from Kings County Behavioral Health. This morning, the department is seeking approval of the agreement with California Mental Health Services Authority for the semi statewide enterprise health record program retroactively effective from March 18, 2022 to March 18, 2029. CAL MASA was established, established as a joint power authority to support many counties to coordinate mental health services throughout the state of California. Kings County Behavioral Health and most counties have entered various participation agreement with CAL MASA, and we have been since 2013. In 2021, CAL MASA and many counties across California worked together to come up with an innovative way to support the implementation of CAL AIM, California Advanced and Innovating Medical Program. On September 9, 2021, department and many counties entered into an agreement with CAL MASA to develop a request for proposal to select a vendor to deliver a California-centric enterprise health record program, EHR program. On, and IRP was released on November 15, 2021. Following a comprehensive evaluation and review from many participating counties, including Kings County, CAL MASA has selected the vendor called Streamline Healthcare Solutions LLC. On March 202022, CAL MASA entered master service program with Streamline. And Streamline has worked exclusively in behavioral health and human services market since 2003. Through this contract, Streamline has developed a smart care base, EHR system, that is cloud-based, single platform, and intelligent EHR solution, which is fully integrated and web-based. Streamline will support total 23 county currently, including Kings County, Fresno County, and Tulare County, manage and support and address all regulatory requirements specific to the Department of Healthcare Services for all participating counties across the state. Each county will have its own version of a smart care, provided with the consistent maintenance and synchronize the system between the counties and their contract providers. This is significant to many counties, including Kings County. Currently, we have our own EHR system. What this means is 23 counties having a one system that works with one vendor and one representative to improve overall, overall mental health services in many different ways, including the overall cost saving for the counties. The start date of a disagreement with CAL MASA is set March 18 for all three 20, 23 counties. This is due to, there are three counties that volunteered to do, be a pilot program to start the program sooner, which is in January this coming 2023, to work out the, any issues or any challenges that all counties may incur. And the Kings County and remaining county will transition in July 1, 2023. The total agreement for this seven-year contract is 1,517,368. The first instrument of 162,898 is due in 30 days after execution of this contract. The total expense under this agreement and sufficient revenue for expenditures were included in a department recommended budget 22, budget unit 425000 mental health. That concludes, the agreement has been reviewed and approved by the county council as to form and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, just to be consistent with last week's comments and, but after reading this, you know, retroactive contracts, but it appears that, you know, the state and the, you know, is trying to work through the vendor process to, to get this established. So no fault on the county. One question I do have, so the, this is more of a flow-through. It's not a tap on general fund based on funds that come from the state, and we would just use that funding to-
We currently have a contract with a vendor that provide electronic health record system service to us. This is, we're entering into a different agreement with a different vendor, but with 22 other counties across California.
Perfect.
And thank you. Mr. Hill, you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to address Supervisor Peterson's concern, as we work through to address all of the retroactive contracts throughout the county, the state and federal contracts are notoriously late, and we really have no recourse to adjust those dates. They are what the state provides, and they are unfortunately always late. So we will continue to see late contracts from those organizations.
And, and medical records is just a complicated field, and it's relatively new, but yet I think this is going to open the door for a lot of other programs. So I think this is a great stop, you know, step in the right direction. And I certainly don't want to stop progress, but I share their frustrations when you can't, when you have dates, milestones to reach, and you don't, you're not able to hit them. But this is a pretty, pretty heavy lift. And so, you know, I think we have to give them a little bit more latitude in their abilities to accomplish everything, because there is a lot of, a lot of documents to have to go through.
Yeah, there's no questions or comments. Additional move for adoption.
I'll second Verboen.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboen. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. Good luck. Thank you very much for presenting today. The next item comes from the fire department, low emission fire apparatus. Now all you've got to have is a low emission fire.
That's it.
Well, we're trying to offset any way we can.
I guess.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. Really happy to be up here to discuss this item with you, seeking approval to apply for a air pollution control grant for the replacement of fire apparatus that are not low emission. We have several that are reaching the 25, 26-year-old range, and we think that they fit the, the application requirements. And so we would like to move forward with, entertaining the thought of applying for this. And, and the Air Board has indicated to us that it could pay up to 80, 90% of the price of fire apparatus, which, as you can see from the agenda item, has increased substantially. Used to be 500,000, now it's almost 900,000. So that's due to all the costs and things that manufacturers incur. So we're hopeful that we can get up to the 90% cost, cost figure there, which will put us at about 700,000 is what we'd have to pay. While we are applying and want to apply for this in this year, I don't expect there's going to be any fiscal impact to the fire fund until next fiscal year's budget, because it takes about 300-plus days to build a fire truck these days. So we'll see what happens. But I respectfully request that you authorize me to apply for the, for the grant and then authorize myself to sign and submit the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Supervisor Verboen.
So have you talked to the Air Board about time of receiving the money for this program?
Yeah, not, not directly. Of course, they want us to submit our application before they start making any direct.
So you have to, do they have to come and inspect the vehicle that you're fitting in?
Yes, they will have.
My, it's been over two years to go through this process. I've had my complaints to the Air Board. I don't know if they hear me. But it is a slow process, but it is, it is needed, so.
Yeah, and we do have the time, because like I said, it's going to be 320 days for, if we ordered it today, it'd be 320 days to get a fire apparatus built, so.
Yeah, I would recommend that you just call frequently to make sure that you're still on the list. It goes in spur to go in segments of fund, the money, pop the money, and then when it runs out, they wait for the next pop. And so depending on where you're at, I think, you know, speaking will get some grease on that one, too.
Yep, we will do that. We have no problem.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to maybe shed a little more light on this, you know, the air district has certain things within its control. You know, their district has reduced air pollution by about 80% with respect to stationary sources, but the vehicle emissions have always fallen on the backs of EPA and CARB. And for quite some time, you know, they haven't been willing to accept the responsibilities. But CARB and EPA have both stepped up. But again, these programs are first come, first served once you get in. And as Supervisor Verboen has stated, that, you know, there's pools of money that come in, and, and I don't care which program you apply for, they're all oversubscribed. And so, you know, get it in and, and get in line.
Yeah, interestingly enough, Supervisor Peterson, I kind of queried some of the local fire departments, and nobody's really used this. So I think it's the large metropolitan agencies that are using it, but we're going to try to get our foot in the door.
Yeah, well, and it's somewhat of a new program as well.
That's correct.
My concern would be the price of the vehicle you're purchasing in 2022. If you don't get it to 2025, hopefully the price is going to be the same. But inflation has gone up so much the last six months, I think we're 12% right now.
Yeah.
You don't want to, if it go down, you want to get the cheaper price. So.
Right.
I don't know if you can do anything about that, but be aware of that.
And I may have to come back to you to ask to do something to lock prices in. So I'm not sure yet. They just want us to apply and, and see where it goes. If, for whatever reason, we can't do it, we can't, fire fund can't afford it or whatever, we, it's no harm, no foul, the money goes right back.
I believe you have identified the vehicle you're purchasing.
Correct.
Process. And then that's a contract they go off of. I know when I did it, it was 2016. I started 2017. I got to where I can identify a vehicle I was purchasing. And it was 2019 before I got it, but I got a 2017 vehicle.
Right.
So I think that the companies that are building them are working with you. You'll still be back at 2022, whenever you sign up for definitely a purchase. The price didn't change, but I didn't get the new one. I got the old one. So that kind of sucked.
We're used to that chassis that we get for fire engines, usually about two years old anyway, so.
If there's no question, comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Verboen.
Can you second?
Seconded by Fagundes. Yeah, I'm kind of like the Carl Mural program or whatever you call it. Do you have to surplus, when these surplus engines, do they have to be junked?
Destroyed, yes.
So they, they won't be able, no resale, or you can't send them to-
But you can disassemble. It's just, it's just the engine. So like the tractor that I did, I kept the tires, the wheels, the weights, the seat. Anything I could get off it, it was just a engine that I delivered. That's all they want to, you to destroy.
Yeah, but-
Sitting out of an engine, there's not much of that.
There's-
There's parts, you know, you can scrap it out.
There is. There, there is probably some parts, and I'm not sure how we'll, we'll, I mean, they have approved dismantlers that you can take it to, to actually have them dismantled. Normally, what we would do with these type, these engines are 26 years old, so we would, we would put them out on public surplus or donate them to Mexico or something with them. We wouldn't keep them in.
That's normally what happens, and whether it's an irrigation district or some other, you know, organization that was able to utilize them. But unfortunately, if you have to scrap these, then that's kind of a, kind of a, it's kind of bad, because some of these organizations can't afford, you know, the part-time use of an engine that might have some years left.
There is also a program as well, but, you know, a lot of the truck fleets are, you know, the bigger companies are updating fleets all the time. They, they might meet tier-four standards, the trucks that they're trading out. So that goes into a pool that is provided to low-income folks that, that, you know, can access those at much more affordable pricing and-
Yeah, the trouble is a 25, 26-year-old engine, it's rusted out, has rusted, has, most of the time, the tires are pretty much, you know, you're going to get rid of it so you don't keep them. It's not like the big line trucks that were, it's time. So you just put a new set of tires on it, and then you surplus it out. These are-
We're fortunate that we have engines, a couple engines that are this old that we can actually-
Oh, no, exactly.
Because it would hurt my heart to get rid of something that was only 10 or 12 years old. So I probably wouldn't be applying.
Yeah. All right. The items have been moved by Verboen, seconded by Fagundes. If there are no other additional questions or comments, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll. call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show this item stands approved.
Thank you.
Four in favor.
Now, do you have to stay on as fire chief until you get to?
That wasn't in the, that wasn't in the contract. I didn't see that.
Yeah, I did.
We'll see if we can work on that.
Yeah. We'll work on that language, then. Yeah. The next item comes from the Health Department. Consider talking about August as Valley Fever Awareness Month. And Heather, you have the duty?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Heather Silva with Public Health. I actually want to introduce Marcella Castellanos. She's a supervising public health nurse with our department. She'll be announcing the resolution. Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Marcella Castellanos, Public Health. Take off your mask if that makes it easier. I'm happy to stand before you here today, representing our communicable disease program in public health, and to announce August is Valley Fever Awareness Month. Valley fever, also called coxidio myocosis, or coxi, is a disease caused by a fungus that grows in the soil and dirt in some areas of California and the southwestern United States. People and animals can get sick when they breathe in dust that is released in the air by wind or soil disturbance that contains the valley fever fungus. This fungus usually infects the lungs and can cause respiratory symptoms, including cough, fever, chest pain, tiredness, night sweats, muscle and joint pain. Once serious symptoms of valley fever appear, which include pneumonia and labored breathing, prompt treatment with antifungal drugs is required. While six out of 10 of us will fight off the infection, the California Department of Public Health shows 8,170 cases, valley fever cases were reported in California in 2021, with 195 of those cases being Kings County residents, and most of those being males between the ages of 20 and 59. If you live or work in areas with known valley fever, be sure to avoid the outdoors on dusty and windy days. Keep windows and doors closed, especially if you're in a high-risk category like being 60 and older, pregnant, diabetic, or immunocompromised. The Kings County Department of Public Health Communicable Diseases Program is respectfully requesting your board to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2022 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in Kings County. This concludes my report. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you. So what were the symptoms again?
You know, they're.
Tiredness.
Fever, tiredness, chest pain.
I think I got it.
You've had it since you were 20. And it's, they're, you know, symptoms that they are very similar to COVID, and very similar to TB, and very similar to, you know, some of the other diseases that we have currently going on.
But if you're over 59, it's worse, right?
It can be potentially worse.
Hey, I don't have the wooden shoes, wooden head, wooden listener. The strange thing about this fungus also is that it affects pets.
It does.
And so even if you have identified those symptoms with your pets, you know, if you go to the vet, that might be a test that they might consider, because it not only affects people, it also affects animals. So it's, this is one of those few that affect both animals and people.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, there's no question or comments. I'll make a motion to approve August as Valley Fever Awareness Month. I'll work on my symptoms.
Yeah. Same. Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Thank you very much. That item stands approved, four in favor, with one absent. All right, now we roll out the red carpet and consider recognizing the winners of the 2022 Kings County Employee Budget Book Photo Contest.
Good morning, Board members, Kiriya Martinez. This past spring, the County Administrative Office launched a countywide photo contest for all county employees. The photo contest winner will have their final photo placed on the adopted fiscal year 2223 final budget book. A recommended budget book must be adopted by the Board of Supervisors by the end of June for the following year to authorized spending authority until the final adopted budget. In the past, the county budget book cover has been a single color page chosen before the recommended book is adopted. So next slide. This slide, if you could, for those on WebEx, shows the budget book the last three years. We've had, had this contest for three years, going on the fourth year, and every year, the winner's photo is placed on the county budget book. To get employees involved, we launched the, the contest in the spring, and there was three categories developed. The best agricultural photo, best landscape photo, and best historical building photo. The contest would have four winners, one for each category, and then one overall winner. The overall winner's photo will be placed on the final budget book. This year, we received a total of 72 photos. Every contestant had to submit a waiver to submit their photos. This year, we received so many great photos, it was hard to make a decision for our judges. This year, for our judges, we invited the executive representatives from each department. Although not all photos were selected, they will be used for future purposes, such as presentations, advertisement, and on our websites. We encourage all employees to submit again next year. If you check out our main website, we still use photos from our photo contest from 2019. The photos are also displayed in the board hallway next to the board chamber entrance. All photos will be posted on the internet after today's budget, after today's meeting. Next slide. So the best agricultural photo goes to Tina Blanchard from Human Services Agency. Tina, if you can come up here, please, to accept your award.
You want to describe your picture? I'm very sorry. That's cool.
Well, congratulations. Good job. We certainly want to thank you for all of the. Did you get the one-of-a-kind guarantee to be a family heirloom basket?
So next category, we have the best historical photo. That photo goes to 2222 winner, Desiree Aragon from Public Health.
Again, another wonderful photo. You certainly have an eye. Thank you for. Their basket. Also, with all kinds of goodies, no carbs.
And Desiree, you could stay up there if you like, and we'll take a group photo. So the best landscape photo goes to Tina again, from Human Services Agency.
I thought it was water. Yep, you catch it early, and then you have another wonderful basket with all kinds of green stuff in it. All kinds of neat stuff.
So the next category will be the overall winner. For this, joining us virtually, we have a very cool trophy camera up here. So the winner goes to, there's a, there's a photo of the trophy, Desiree from Public Health. And in the next slide, if Ed wants to move over, this will be the final cover for our adopted fiscal year 2223 budget book. That will be adopted next week at our final budget hearings.
Yes, and then all kinds of good stuff here. You have a one-of-a-kind guarantee to be a family heirloom cap. They also have a pin. There's a serial number on the back that don't really look for. Also, they found a, also a very unique amber lens cup. So for all of your efforts, we certainly want to thank you and acknowledge that you'll go down in history now as that photo, it will be used and will be part of Kings County history from now on.
And that concludes my presentation.
Thank Christine for her efforts putting this together.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to Christine, who really put together, you know, these wonderful photos outside. We have never really displayed them, and so she set them up outside. Also, the judging day, she really kind of put the gifts forward. And thanks, Christine.
You made it a very funny bit. And all the photographers that submitted, there were a lot of, a lot of photos to go through, a lot of good ideas, a lot of neat ideas. And, and, you know, this has just developed into something I never thought it would develop into. But with cell phones and, you know, sure, you can have a $3,000 or $4,000 camera, or you can have a cellphone that takes some pretty neat photos.
Or $3,000 or $4,000 cellphone.
Or three, three or four. That you can answer the phone, do, do, do a email and check your news all at the same time, and take a photo. So, good. Well, thank you, everyone.
I use my camera as a memory.
Yeah, yeah. That's what your probation officer said, too. The next idea also comes from the administration. Consider a letter of support for the F-35s.
The service chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, one of the administrative analysts at the administrative office. So this morning, I'm requesting that your board authorize the chairman of the board to sign a letter of support for the F-35A Lightning Two aircraft operational bed down of Naval Air Station Lemoore. So the Department of the Air Force issued a notice of intent at the United States Federal Register on July 19, 2022, to prepare an environmental impact statement to assess the potential social, economic, and environmental impacts associated with the bed down of F-15 EX and F-35A aircraft that would replace their legacy F-15 C slash D aircraft. So Naval Air Station or NAS Lemoore is one of the four preferred locations that is being considered for the F-35A Lightning aircraft only. So the alternative location they were considering are the Barnes Air National Guard Base at Westfield Barnes Regional Airport, Westfield, Massachusetts, the Fresno National Air Guard Base at Fresno Yosemite International Airport, the NAS Joint Reserve Base, New Orleans, Belchase, Louisiana, and of course NAS Lemoore. As mentioned above, it's only being considered for the F-35A Lightning aircraft only. As mentioned on your meeting on July 26, 2022, the National Guard Bureau and Department of the Air Force is inviting the public to learn about a proposal to locate a F-35A Lightning aircraft at NAS Lemoore. An informational meeting to learn more about this proposal, ask questions, and to submit comments will be held in person on Wednesday, August 10, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the LTA Portuguese Hall located at 470 Champion Street in Lemoore. There will also be a virtual meeting on Thursday, August 25, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. So written comments may be submitted by the deadline of September 2, 2022. So the draft environmental impact statement is anticipated in summer 2023, and the final one is anticipated in the winter slash spring of 2024. So the record of decision will be approved and signed no earlier than 30 days after the final environmental impact statement. Finally, if NAS Lemoore is selected as a location for to bed down F-35A Lightning aircrafts, it will bring additional military personnel for its operation, who will contribute to the economic stability of Kings County. So the estimated number that they're looking at is 80 personnel. So with that number, an unknown percentage of family members will be accompanying this personnel. Also, the new construction projects are being projected, which may need local economy support. So that will be a great for our local businesses. Barring any questions, I respectfully request that your board authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support for the F-35A Lightning Two aircraft operational bed down of Naval Air Station Lemoore. Thank you.
Thank you, Domingo. Questions, comments, or concerns? Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, just a kind of a look back, and, and I want to support this. But I also want to think back about, you know, the last time an opportunity like this presented itself. It happened to present itself during the City of Lemoore's general plan update. And through that process, you know, the Navy sat there in those meetings for over 11 months, took part in, never expressed concerns. And then in the 11th hour of the general plan update, and Lemoore walked in and dropped a bomb, basically said, you know, we can't support the general plan. Our noise contours are of, of concern to us in the way the general plan was drafted. And so just having that in mind, I guess I ask, is this just a blanket support letter at this point? Or if the Navy comes back and requests, you know, blanket noise contour demands, where are we going to be at with that if we have a letter of support on file?
That will be, I will have to check on that, but talking to the base last week, their coordinator, they, they had mentioned that the base is right now a neutral, and the the F-35 bed down that the Department of the Air Force is requesting. So I don't have any answer on that, Supervisor.
Okay. Well, it's just, just historical perspective and, and, you know, well, again, I, I want to see, you know, us continue to grow and, and be able to work together. But working together means, you know, working together. And, and so, I don't know, I just throw that out for discussion. And, and I'm sure that, you know, well, I don't know, County Council, maybe you can address that. I mean, is it a blanket support letter? Obviously, the draft EIR comes out in 2023, supposed to be approved in 2024. I guess we can, you know, while supporting it now, we can express further concerns later.
Yeah, I think you can do a general letter, letter of support, and then provide further clarification, or even withdraw your support at a future date. At this point, if it's the board's desire to support this project, then, then it's appropriate to vote in that direction, knowing that you can always change it in the future.
Yeah. All right.
Supervisor Verboon? I think since that time, City of Lemoore has changed direction on the growth of the community. Then on last call, and I think Joe probably poured out on it at Board Member Comment, that the city has decided to grow more north and less west, and we just approved that last Wednesday. So I think the city will be more, possibly will be behind this as well.
And I think part of the discussion, they've increased their building standards as well to account for some of the noise. And I don't know the difference between F-35C and an F-35A, but noise-wise and sorties are probably going to be relatively close. Since the F-35 for air bodies.
Yeah, it's just a frame. Cs for carrier, and As for non-carrier.
Correct.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome. Moved by Verboon.
Seconded.
Seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
As the record show, that item stands approved for in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. That concludes the business on the agenda for this morning's agenda. We'll now move to board member announcements on reports. Their own initiative, board members can make brief announcements on their own activities. Supervisor Fagundes?
Not much this week. Just a few phone calls and minor stuff, so I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Supervisor Verboon?
We had a busy week with KCG, LAFCO, and CART, and answered a lot of phone calls about water. Did a lot of interviews with what's happening in our community with Sigma, and that's about it. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
So, I'm also taking a guy flying in from New York today. Flew in last night. We're going to meet after the meeting, and we're going to drive around and be doing a book on what happens when the wells go dry. So, take them around, show them all the banded wells and dead oak trees and vacant river. That's my plan for the next couple, couple hours afternoon.
Tour guide?
I'm a tour guide, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll be Grizzly Adams without a beard.
I figure we get to pack our ashes and hit the road.
That's it. Supervisor Peters?
Up a creek without water.
They went from jet skis to ATVs.
That can't say anything, can it?
No. Be nice.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, don't have a lot, other than, you know, inflation, recession. Obviously, this week, a lot of discussion about the definition of a recession. And, but the real world impacts, and those were exposed, I think, yesterday, the end of the year fiscal report by Calpers. They're showing a $29 billion loss, 6.1% decline in that account. And so, just remind us here that things can go in a different way very quickly, and we need to be mindful of those. Thank you.
You know what a recession is, when your neighbor loses his job, and depression is when you lose your job.
Very good. I wrapped up announcing duties at more Little League, and that has moved on. The Housing Authority also had a meeting where we approved all of the operating audits. This one was a little bit difficult because we shifted from a state fiscal year to a federal fiscal year, so there was a 15-month period. So, it was a little bit confusing, but it'll be more confusing next time when we go 15-month and try to compare it to a 12-month. And then after we get past those two items, then it should be fairly easy to understand. On top of that, we left the retirement program fixed to the state, so now it's just all over. So, it's a little bit confusing, but two years from now, nobody will know the difference. As Supervisor Verboon talked about, LAFCO, we did approve amending the sphere of influence for the city of Limor to allow for several, yeah, several annexations, three annexations. Couple of them deal with cannabis and one dealt with housing. We also approved the administrative process of approving utility easements. We continue to get requests for water, and we've even had one wastewater. As some systems fail, whether it's water or wastewater treatment, and they have the ability to hook onto a municipal system, that will now become an administrative duty, so that it doesn't have to wait for the 30 days or longer to get on an agenda. CART, we also had a public meeting, public hearing to talk about service changes. We did have to change a couple of routes. Driver recruitment and retention continues to be an issue. And so, we're trying to right-size the organization to lessen the impacts of operations. And so, you might see some things. Some things have changed a lot when we established the route going to Valley Children's. There weren't too many options. Now there are local options. We also have follow-ups through teleconferencing and everything else, so we're just approving some changes that probably have been even before COVID coming along. We also approved the legal counsel contract with Belzer and Richardson. And then we also received some update on the Transit Center construction grants, which are coming along pretty well. At KAG, we also received the 2022 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy. And we had a public hearing for that, talking about the regional housing needs allocation methodology. Some of those numbers are pretty high. They're based on an eight-year period. But it will be difficult with drought and the economic conditions. We're just not 100% sure how some of these communities will be held to those standards of more, more housing. The Kings-Telare Master Plan for Aging continue to meet, and we continue to talk about issues as Supervisor Verboon gets older and puts more and more of an impact on the rounding systems. So, we're trying to work out those issues before they become a crisis, but we're, it's very difficult trying to get people like that involved. Also, traveled to Paso Robles for the Midstate Fair, the Ranch Rodeo. They're really not finals. The finals were actually Saturday night, but the morning were the preliminaries. A lot of activities, a lot of teams, a lot of failures. 28 teams, only 14 moved on. Out of the 14 that were, got times, only six of them were able to go to the rodeo. So, a lot of competition, very nice weather, a lot of great teams, so very good, and congratulations to the winners. Limor Raceway had a points race, a little over 50 cars on a very hot evening. Pushed, pushed the start time back an hour, and then computer problems pushed that back an additional 30 minutes. So, we got out, we got started a little bit late, but it cooled off a little bit better than it was at 102, and made a long night out of it, but it was a very nice evening for all the racers. On Sunday, Cabrillo Club of Kings County held its annual scholarship luncheon to pass out awards to recently high school graduates as they prepare for college, and we had a nice turnout and very nice event there. And then, just a reminder, school opens soon with grammar schools, high schools, and colleges returning to session. Some will be next week and some the week after, but definitely within the next couple of weeks, you'll see traffic changes, traffic patterns, and a lot more traffic around some of those facilities that you may not have seen for the last three months, but it's certainly going to change, and it is the season. So, with that, thank you very much and good luck. Mr. Hill, do you have a report on board correspondence, upcoming events, or information on future agenda items that you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received a meeting notice and agenda for the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board meeting that will take place Thursday, August 11 at 9:00 a.m. Your board received the Southwest Groundwater Sustainability Agency Resolution approving the levying of 2023 assessments. Your board also received a notice of vacancy that trustee Mark Grewal has resigned from the Board of Directors of the Teleria Lake Reclamation District, 761, effective July 18, 2022. This vacancy will be filled by appointment. Your board also received correspondence dated July 26, 2022, which contains a sworn affidavit of the Kings County Assessors regarding 2022-2023 Kings County Local Assessment Rule. For upcoming events, the Kings Art Center will be hosting an Evening of the Arts on Friday, August 5, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 605 North Doughty Street in Hanford. There will be an exhibition of art, carnival games, face painting, popcorn punch, and superior dairy ice cream, of course. Submission is free. Kings Partnership is hosting a Business Happy Hour on Tuesday, August 9, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the Hanford Chamber Office. The cost is free for members or $5 for non-members. There will be a Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon hosted by the Greater Kings County Chamber of Commerce and the Hanford Chamber of Commerce, August 10, at the Hanford Civic Auditorium located at 400 North Doughty Street, Hanford. The event will take place at 12:00 p.m., and tickets are $20 each. Tickets can be purchased on Eventbrite or through the Hanford Chamber Commerce website. As heard today, the National Guard Bureau of Department of the Air Force invite the public to learn more about a proposal to locate F-35A aircrafts at Limor Naval Air Station. An informational meeting to learn more about this proposal, ask questions and to submit comments will be held in person on Wednesday, August 10, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the LTA Portuguese Hall located at 470 Champion Street in Limor. There will also be a virtual meeting on Thursday, August 25, from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. You can gain access to that web meeting on the, through the agenda packet that was published today for this meeting or through the website. Excuse me. The city of Avonall and Self-Help Enterprise will be hosting a rental and utilities workshop for those impacted by COVID-19 on August 17, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Avonall Recreation Center located at 717 East Monterey Street, or excuse me, Avenue in Avonall. For more information, please call 559-802-1600. The Hanford Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Biz Ball Pickleball Tournament on Saturday, August 27, at 7:00 p.m. at the Hanford Pickleball Courts located at 1010 West Grangeville Boulevard. Registration is $60 per team, and players must be employed by a local business. Rotary Club of Hanford will host its annual golf tournament at the Kings Country Club, Monday, September 12, from 10:30 to 5:30. Space is limited to the first 120 players. Reservations are on a first-paid basis. Proceeds from this event will be split among area veteran service organizations. Contact Joan Darling at 977-9999 regarding signups and sponsorship. The 10th Annual Light of Hope Elite Cocktail Event will take place on Saturday, September 24, at 5:30 p.m. at the Hanford Civic Center Auditorium. Attendees will hear from advocates from CASA of Kings County. Tickets are $75 per person, and the proceeds will provide hopeful futures for children's in Kings County foster care. For more information, call 559-587-9908. Kings County Special Olympics will be having their chili cook-off on Saturday, September 24, at the Hanford Civic Park. Vendors and teams are needed, so please email kingscountyspecialolympics@gmail.com for details. The Kings County Sheriff will be holding an open house for their new headquarters this Friday, August 5, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Headquarters located at 1550 Kings County Drive, and refreshments will be provided. For upcoming agenda items, administration has four items, designation of, excuse me, designation of a county representative for the Kings County to the PRISM Board. We also have consideration regarding grooming to Ramona and Kettleman City Community Service Districts for utility arrearsages, impact fee, public hearing, and of course, the fiscal year 2022, 2022, excuse me, 23 final budget is also next Tuesday. Behavioral Health has one item, consideration for an agreement with Judge Rottenberg Education Center for Residential Treatment Program Services. CDA has one item for consideration regarding the monthly report of planning commission actions. Fire Department has two items, consideration of an acceptance of Senate Bill 178 funding from Assembly Member Rudy Solis's office, and consideration to approve a retroactive agreement for fire services with the city of Avonall. HR has one item for consideration regarding approval and agreement with NFP Retirement Incorporated for Deferred Compensation Program Consulting Services. And Public Health has the COVID-19 update. That concludes our report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hill? There are none. We have no unscheduled, I mean, we have no closed session, item sessions scheduled for today, so our next regular scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, August 9, 9:00 a.m. I do want to bring to your attention a Board of Equalization hearing scheduled for Thursday, August 4, at 9:00 a.m. If you don't have that on your schedule, it's still calendared and still going to move forward. With that, thank you very much, everyone. Stay cool, stay healthy, and we hope to see you back August 9. Thank you very much.